Right, seeing none, we'll move on to our action agenda. First item fiscal twenty-four year end transfers and encumbrances superintendent's recommendation. Uh, the first is to encumber fiscal year twenty-four funds to be expended for salaries and goods and services. So in everyone's packet, that's document uh A one. Superintendent's recommendation is to vote to approve two million seventy-two thousand four hundred nine dollars and sixty-eight cents as the total encumbrance for FY twenty-four. Um, as included in the document, those encumbered salaries have already been earned prior to the end of the fiscal year. There any discussion from committee on this?
No.
Okay, the second item uh to approve fiscal twenty-four line item transfers. So that would be a a document A two in in your packet. Um, one is to transfer sixty-nine thousand one four forty-nine from various line items and regular ed to sped expenses. Transfer three twenty-eight one forty-sixty-five to various items and sped expenses, transfer fifty-one five twenty-seven forty-six. To various line items and sped expenses, transfer one oh seven four thirty-seven fifty to various line items and sped transportation expenses. Transfer transfer four thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars to various line items and sped transportation expenses. Transfer three thousand four hundred six dollars and twenty cents to various lines and sped transportation expenses for total transfers five hundred forty, uh sixty-four thousand six hundred sixty-five dollars and thirty cents. Are there any discussions, comments, questions from the committee on these transfers?
No.
Okay, hearing none, move on to the next one. So item number three, to approve total expenditures for fiscal twenty-four. That would be document A three and A four, so um. Or A three, um, so to approve twenty-one million. Four hundred twenty-nine thousand seven hundred thirty-two dollars and ninety-five cents is the total expenditure for FY twenty-four. Declare five thousand four hundred twenty-nine dollars and five cents as regular. As surplus, regular ed expenses, unexpended funds from the FY twenty-four town meeting appropriation to be returned to the town of Westport General Fund. Any discussion, comments, questions from the committee on that item?
Um, Mr. Thrasher has his hand up.
Okay, go ahead, yep.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I actually have a quick question regarding the uh. The energy credit and the ever-source bill that was outstanding. Um, is there any update as far as uh? What the the plans are to to address that? Just wanted to double check before we approved all the these expenditures.
Is it okay for me to speak? Evan?
Sure.
Um, as far as I know, I have not heard anything yet back from Nicole. Um, the town accountant was still on hold, but just so you know, I I know that we did receive a summary. Um, on this, that from Karen. So basically, we're at the same part. I did not encumber. As per was directed in that summary, I did not encumber the June's bill. So what we're hoping is that once this clears up, that um, the credits will go ahead and wipe that. That last bill out, that last invoice for June. So at this point, that's kind of where we are with this. We're still on hold waiting, I guess, for ever sauce and I don't know, don't hold me to it. I think it's the Briley Road. Something with the credits there and getting that cleared up there.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. I I know that ever source had said. It would be all right to withhold the payment on that for now, so that's good. Um, if it does end up being an issue where. The credits do not cover, um, it may be necessary, I think, to to apply for uh. A a transfer from the uh, from the town, uh, from the reserve fund, uh, but at this time, it looks like we're we're good, so. Excellent, all right. Thank you so much for your work on that and uh, Mr. Chair, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, on that note, I will add that I think while it's, you know. Good that this was a, you know, an error that. Is beyond our control and is not is not, you know, due to our usage or or other things, um. It is still in a, you know, an increase in an expense in our budget that, you know, if this doesn't get cleared up in a. Reasonable amount of time that, you know, it does cause concern, at least from accounting pers- like an accounting perspective. Um, so our view and also the town treasurer's view to my, you know, to my understanding was. That if we were able to get the reserve fund prior to the fifteenth, um, I know the finance committee was against it, um, but. I think that our view going into it and the town treasurer's view going into it was if we can get that reserve. To cover that and if it's not needed to transfer that back to the town, which would go to free cash, which I believe would happen anyway after the fifteenth. Um, you know, that was the, that was the the request. The transfer from the reserve fund a couple of weeks ago in front of the finance committee, so um, I just wanted to to clarify that point as well. Got Chris to see your hand up, yep.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So uh, about the uh, the finance committee is also meeting this evening, um, and uh, I. Would ask maybe, do we have an updated number as to exactly how much of a discrepancy is left? Um, cause if so, I I may try to, I I I think I would try to to get that that uh. That reserve idea passed, so where it would be held. Um, but not necessarily transferred unless it is, it's it's deemed to be needed. I think, I think that's. We still have a little bit of time here, next few days anyway. Um, to do that, so I'm I'm not sure what your thought or what would, if if this is something that we want to pursue. I'll certainly uh, give it, give it a go at tonight's meeting, but uh. I'm just curious what the, what the chair and what the uh.
Rock up in the middle for me, but but uh, from the piece, piece that I heard, um. I would say, you know, it's worth noting that it's still on our radar, um, at least from from this committee's perspective and. From an accounting perspective, it's still a, you know, a concern and we're keeping an eye on it and, you know, given that we haven't. This this issue hasn't resolved yet, it's certainly, you know. I I think the the thought of of some members on the finance committee from what I gathered from that meeting was that this issue would. Would hopefully be resolved by this point, um, over the few weeks since that last meeting of the finance committee, which unfortunately it has not. Um, so I think it, you know. For the finance committee's edification, it may be worth noting that that. We have not, the the situation has not uh, been resolved as of yet, um, from what I'm hearing from from Melissa on it, so.
Would would it be possible to get an exact figure as to what the numbers, because I know there was a. An estimate for a transfer, uh, but it would be possible to get an exact figure to ask for this evening?
Yes, I could, I could get you that information.
Okay, thank you very much.
Now, I th- I think obviously the the hope is that it wouldn't be needed, right? And this would would resolve, but. But in the event that it doesn't and, you know, that there's, there was talk at the last finance committee of of shut off notices and. Um, I certainly don't think that's an ideal situation for us to put our school department in. Um, to be in in this situation, so um. Like I said, hopefully it it it's resolved, but I think it is um, worth noting for the finance committee giving an update that that it's not. Yet been uh, uh. So, so.
I just have one other thing, uh, when I'm sending the information, I'm working on a projection, so I can't really give exact because I do not know. What the June bill will be. So that is a difficult thing at this point, you know that, so I can give an approximate of what I'm projecting, but. We won't know that until we receive it.
Under understood, I think it approximates that 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 should suffice for now too. So thank you so much again for your work on this.
Yeah, thank you. Anything else from the, from other committee members on on that item?
All set.
Okay, all right. All right, the last piece of this uh, action item is number five, to approve. Returning fiscal year twenty-three and expended encumbrances to the town of Westport General Fund and prior year grant unexpended funds to the town of Westport General Fund. So that would be.
Seven thousand?
Yep, so A five, seven thousand one hundred seven dollars and fifty-seven cents. Prior year encumbrances and from the grant accounts was from rural aid FY twenty-two thirty-four cents. And from reserve fund, uh, foundation reserve FY twenty-two, two lo- two dollars and ninety cents. So any discussion from committee members on that item?
No.
Okay. All right, before we uh, make a motion on this, I just wanted to. Commend our business department for the hard work that they do, Michelle and Melissa. Um, you know. Closing out the year isn't, isn't easy, there's a lot to go through and uh, you know, even throughout the year, just the. The carrying out of the budget and, you know, the planning for it and uh, implementing it. It it goes through a a long process and a lot of different iterations, so we certainly appreciate all the hard work that that you put into it. You know, our our district as is no secret is uh. Always in a tough budget situation, we have, you know, revenues that aren't growing to meet increasing expenses and that's across all town departments, so we're. Certainly sympathetic to the town's perspective on this also. Um, and we really need every cent that we, you know, that that comes to us from from town meeting to. To support our staff, educate our students, and that's really what this is about, so. Um, you know, I just wanted to to thank you both for your your hard work, um. And, you know, as we go into FY twenty-five, you know, it's again another. Situation that's less than ideal, given the appropriation from town meeting, but. You know, we we make it work with what we have and the resources and our our great staff to to support our students, so. Um, so just wanted to say thanks for that. Any other comments from the committee?
Again, thank you, Michelle and Melissa. It's a lot of work and a a lot of uh, hair pulling, but thank you for all that you've been doing.
Yes, I I echo the chair's sentiment. Thank you very much for all the hard work.
Thank you. I also want to just commend to the other, two in the business office, because it is definitely a. A a team effort on on all parts to make it work, so thank you for recognizing that.
Thank you. Okay, with that being said, I will entertain a motion to approve fiscal year twenty-four year end transfers and encumbrances. Uh, the su- the superintendent's recommendations for those.
Make a motion to accept uh, all the business we just did on the budget and, like I said that right? Budget um, meeting now, I mean, for this last amendment, I'm sorry, it's early in the morning.
That's the, the fiscal twenty-four year end transfers.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay, all right, motion means second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, we will take a roll call vote.
Hi Glory Cabral.
I Christopher Thrasher.
I Jason Pacheco.
And I Evan Gendrow, so that carries unanimously. Second item on the action agenda, Westport Community Schools Bill Warrant dated six twenty-eight twenty-four. Four hundred eighty-nine thousand eight hundred forty-two thousand forty-one cents and seven twelve twenty-four, two hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars, seventy-one. Two hundred ninety, two hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars, seventy-one dollars and ten cents. All right, is there any comments, questions from the committee on those?
No.
Okay, this is on as a, as an action item, Lori, is that, do we need to take action on this or? For the bill warrant?
No, you don't.
Okay.
Just accepting it, sorry, my fault.
All right. All right, so we will not take action on that item. Item C, review and act on minutes, school committee meeting of Tuesday, six eighteen twenty-four. Is there a motion to approve?
So move, Mr. Chair.
I'll second.
Okay, motion means second to to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? Alright, hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
I Glory Cabral.
I Christopher Thrasher.
I Jason Pacheco.
I Evan Gendrow. Okay, item D, to review and act on the letter to the select board regarding the district's move out of the former high school, so the. The town administrator had asked us for uh, a letter from the committee to the. To the select board, um. I don't think this is, this is certainly not meant to be a detailed proposal, it's more of a a communication to the select board. Outlining, um, you know, that we're planning to move out of the high school and what that would look like, you know, us continuing to. Uh, take on the grounds, um, mowing and weed whacking, maintain those. Maintain some space in the garage and two offices off the garage. Um, this would also include building checks, so I just wanted to. I just, so I drafted a letter that circulated to the committee for discussion today, um, if there's any. Recommendations, thoughts from the committee, questions, be happy to entertain that. Mr. Thrasher.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I uh, have have been thinking that. No matter how this this all shakes out, um, it's going to require, I think, a bit of a workshop. The uh, with the town administrator and and really, I think the the select board might need to be involved to some extent as well. Um, so I I had uh, raised this idea with you last night of of perhaps, uh, or there was a, at the select board meeting, but. Perhaps there's a way to do maybe uh, a quick committee, um, maybe. Members of the budget subcommittee here and ask that the select board uh, appoint a couple of representatives as well as uh, getting uh. Mr. Albin, uh, uh, Mr. Posa and uh, and Jim. All together for kind of a workshop, just to go over all of the logistics involved here. Um, I think that. The, you know, the intentions are clear here. At the end of the day, uh, the the school department needs to save ninety thousand dollars and needs to better support. Our staff in uh, in the schools, off in the schools, uh, so. However, we get to that uh, to that end, um, and and and. Trying to take every step uh, that we can along that line, a- along that road to uh, to ensure that this does not. Negatively affect the town's bottom line either. I think that there's, there's a win-win way to to get this done. But I do think it's going to take everybody in a room, uh, kind of hashing it all out just to make this happen, um, as smooth as, as smoothly as possible, so. I don't know what what your thoughts are all, or the rest of the committee's thoughts are on that.
I thought that was uh, when I talked to Evan last night, was a good idea, but to have the whole select board, because the select board's still very divided. So if you put everybody all in the same room, well, the whole school committee and all people that are, you know. Need to be there would be much better to uh, have all opinion, not just the opinion of a couple of people.
I will note, so the um, to see give context, what. Mr. Thrasher was referring to at the select board meeting was last night, uh, the select board on their agenda, um, included a discussion item for. The long-term building committee's recommendations on that, so Mr. Thrasher serves as the chair there. And presented the long-term building committee's recommendation for the old high school, um. And as part of that, our, the the move of the school committee. Um, that we've been discussing came up as part of that discussion, uh, so I responded to. A couple of questions from the select board on that, but, you know, with the intent that, that the um, communication. To the select board would come following today, uh, our discussion approval of this letter, at least to get the ball rolling on that discussion. Um, so I, I think that. It would be good to get. The select board and the school committee together, whether that's an iteration of, you know, representatives of each board, or if that. You know, if that looks like. You know, in in the past, the select board during their regularly scheduled meetings has had other boards in. To discuss certain items on their agenda, so however that looks like, um, I think as long as we get. Everyone sort of, you know, in in discussion on this, because the select board still had some questions and I'm not sure if it was a. You know, if, how much has been communicated from the town side and shared with the select board, so I think it would be helpful for. Everyone to get together and discuss this, because there's concerns on the town side with costs, there's concerns on our side with cost. Um, I will note a couple of relevant pieces that were discussed at the select board meeting, uh, for our purposes, was that. Uh, the town administrator had showed the uh, article from town meeting, I believe a couple of years ago. Which laid out the transfer of the building to the, to, under the select board's purview. And the language in that, in that uh, article included the care, maintenance and operation of the building. Was under the select board's purview, um, and transferred from the school committee, so I just wanted to. Note that for the committee's purpose, um, and also. There was questions about winterization and what that would look like, and if we were to do that, my, my. One of my questions to the committee today would be, you know, do we want to include uh, winterization as part of. Our communication to the select board, or, you know, should we hold that for further discussion? Um, I think part of it. Is, you know, if if the long-term building committee is making a recommendation and. Uh, you know, that, their their recommendation included that the town would pursue a plan. For the municipal use of the building in the future. So I'm not sure if the, if the select board would want us to winterize it, would, you know, what that would look like, so. Um, again, just one of the committee's thoughts on that, uh, Mr. Pacheco, I see that your hand is raised.
Yes, thank you, Evan. Um, I do worry a little bit about the uh, winterization piece, um, just due again to uh. You know, part of the reason why I think, you know, certainly us and the town want to continue to use the property is for um, youth sports, so I think the. The winterization would shut down, um, the use of the uh, basketball court for, um, you know, for our kids, um. You know, and again, I understand that there would be um, added expense, um. By not winterizing and now needing heat, um, for that, but I think it's something that should be um, discussed and and certainly worked out, um. You know, between all the parties to uh, make sure that the kids don't lose out. Um, I know that the basketball league was uh. Without a home for a few years there, um. When uh, when the middle, the old middle school got closed and we were building a new one, um, and I know that, you know, a bunch of people in town have. Worked hard to get it back up and running, um, over the last year or two, so certainly something that I think would uh, would be beneficial to the town to uh, to keep up and running.
Thank you, Michelle.
And I did have a conversation with our head, head of facilities as well, and I guess it's extremely costly. To winterize, so I would be concerned about us putting. That dollar on our budget to go out and winterize the building with the unknown, because it is such an old building. Um, I know that he mentioned the type of winterization that would need to be used was going to be extremely costly, so I I would. Just be caught, I think, you know, we probably want to be cautious on that end for that, what that cost would be. I bet you doesn't, wouldn't even touch the utilities.
Right. Thank you, yeah, and I, and I, I'm in agreement there. I I left it out of the letter, um, but I just wanted to get the committee's thoughts on it. Mr. Thrasher?
So I I I do share the same concerns when it comes to. The uh, when it comes to the the cost, the potential cost of winterization, um, I also, you know. I I say again, at the end of the day, what the the school committee, what the school department needs is to save. We need to save ninety thousand dollars and we need to better support our staff as, with the staff that we have in the other schools, um. How we get there, I think there there may, ha- we may have to find some sort of wiggle room, because. What I, what I will tell you on the town, on on the town side of this, um, there is a significant cost that could be incurred. With uh, with the increased insurance cost if the building is completely vacated. Um, I know this might not be the most popular thing to bring up here, but I I think we really need to look at. Options that may be available to leave something. Uh, of i- in the building, whether that's maybe like one tech office. Um, I I even think it may be worth thinking about keeping the uh, the uh, out of school time program there as well. Uh, because I mean, the town needs, I believe the insurance, it it's, it's thirty-one or thirty-two percent. Of the building needs to be occupied or at least used, um, and I think currently there's some wiggle room on on. What exactly used means, but if the, i- i- if everything school department is is vacated out of there. Um, there's, that wiggle room's not going to exist anymore for the town, and and if, and if. If it ends up being a situation where the school department saves ninety thousand dollars, but the uh, the town. You know, it costs them two hundred and fifty thousand more, I don't think that's going to help us in the long run, be able to secure the budgets that we need. Uh, to to maintain and to uh, to have an upward trajectory for for our our school system, so I I'm wondering, is there? You know, I I I'm curious about the superintendent's thoughts here, and then the rest of the committee as well, I just. Is there some way we can figure out how to save ninety thousand dollars, how to support our staff at the schools? And at the same time, make sure that the building is still somewhat occupied, at least enough to cover the uh, the requirements for insurance?
I, s- just on that, on that point, I wanted to, you know, add one thing there, so I think. That's, that's great to think about, and there are certainly legitimate concerns on the town side with this, um, I will note that. I'm not sure if if, the only scenario I would see that not. Being workable would be if if the district was still incurring the same expenses from that. Um, you know, because the part of this was a, was a budget discussion, so from a fiscal perspective, if. That we were able to maintain that percentage, um, while also saving that ninety thousand dollars as a result of this move. Which would mean that the town, uh, I believe right now fifty thousand of that is the town charging for utility expenses. Um, and the other forty is for custodial, so I think that would be workable, uh, from my perspective, as long as, as long as we. Would save that fifty thousand utility and the forty thousand custodial cost, whether that means that the town doesn't charge for utilities, whether, whatever that looks like. Um, I think that would be workable, um, I would add that, you know, at the end of the day. As as I I said this to the select board last night, um. The goal of the committee here and the intention of the committee, you know, going into this was, we need to save ninety thousand dollars and uh, and. Support staff in in the other building, so that's where the, you know, the decision came in, um, but whatever. That looks like in terms of, you know. Long-term with the building, that that, or the percentage rather, that it's occupied, um, I, I'm certainly open to working with the town on that. As long as those two goals are accomplished.
How is the select board uh, working with you on it? Because you, we know, you've already said what needs to be done. Are they um, okay with, like, giving other options or this is what they want?
Um, you know, I I can't speak for them, I'm not sure, um. I think it, that's why I think the discussion would be helpful with, uh, between the school committee and and the select board to discuss this. We've, you know, I know the business office has had preliminary conversations with the town administrator and uh, the finance committee chair. But, you know, I think short of us having details on on cost, it's difficult to to say. Uh, what the, you know, what that would look like for the, from the town side, um, but.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Are we incurring a cost of moving all this stuff too? Everything that's going to cost to move, to get all the offices done, to get all this, isn't there a cost to that that's coming from us? That it could be saved somewhere else?
If if you could address the 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 move piece?
Right, so the move piece, we would be having someone come in to move everything, so there would be a cost to that. I don't know what that cost is yet. We're waiting, we were waiting for dates to see what the, that, to get the estimate cost on that, um. What, you mentioned something else, Lori, what else did you have a question on, sorry?
No, I was just saying the cost of, once, you know, it's not just the moving, it's also, you know, things that have to be done and, you know, maybe division. Petitions and uh, equipment and all desk, other same stuff, is there another cost that we're incurring? Because of the move, because, you know, rooms are different sizes, I, that's what I'm saying, is if you didn't have to move, you wouldn't have to have these extra costs.
And the only cost that we foresee is really just the move, having the, a moving company come in. Instead of using our custodial staff where they're busy all summer, we would just have just the move done. And that would be the only cost, as far as technology will handle the rest of it, custodial will help with setting things in place. Maintenance will help with just putting, you know, like, we've already looked at everybody's desks, so everything would be exactly moving from what what we have here. Technology's already worked on that piece too, so.
Okay, good, thank you.
I I would add to that too, that the, you know, the the one-time, you know, a one-time expense associated with, with the move here. You know, is is, at least from my perspective, you know, more responsible than continuing to incur. The cost from the old building that, you know, regardless of what we decide or or our move here. You know, we we would, something would have to be done one way or another within the next year, just because, you know, the, there's already a discussion of of having a debt exclusion on the ballot for. For April, about the renovation of the, of the building for municipal use, um, so whether that passes or fails, I think that would. You know, either way, it it wouldn't be. you know, either way, it, it wouldn't be sustainable for us to stay in there um, with no plan for the building, um, and having no plan for the last eight years or so, five years. Um, and then if it passes, you know, and it's renovated, then that would certainly impact our use of the building and us having to, to leave. So I think either way, looking into next year, there would have to be some decisions made on this building, uh, whether we, we stay or go. Um, the question really, um, how I view it comes down to this fiscal year. Um, the, the, the costs incurred from this fiscal year. I know the, the town has mentioned some potential um, appropriations that they can tap into from previous uh, town meetings associated with the building costs, which could offset increases in insurance. But again, we're not sure on the, we haven't heard of, an, an exact figure on that, uh, so it'd be tough to assign a, a number. But I will say from a planning perspective, given the recommendation of the building committee and uh, discussions that the select board's having, you know, it, it seems to be less sustainable for us to stay there, you know, even going into next year. So uh, just from, based on, on, it's looking like there will be some sort of vote following uh, uh, plans from both the select board and the long-term building committee. So I just wanted to note that. Senator Albin, I see your hand is raised.
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, just uh, very quickly, um, um, any, any talk of uh additional savings, um, would, would no doubt have to include personnel, so I would wanna do that offline, you know, just wanna make that point.
All right, is there anything further from the committee on this? Particularly on the, on the letter perspective and, and the communications to the select board?
So I, I would just uh, just say again, I, I think this, some of the issues that Gloria, uh, Ms. Cabral just, just brought up, uh, shows, shows me the, the, the need for kind of a workshop committee type situation. Um, there's a lot, and I don't, the only thing that I don't necessarily agree with is that it, while I think there should be an element of maybe of a report, if you will, to the full select board and that, and, and allowing the select board to, to weigh in. Um, to me, this is not a necessarily a, a normal meeting type of situation, that this is, you know, quite literally a um, a workshop session, uh, public of course, public meeting, but still it would need to be, you know, I, 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 I see this taking a few hours and taking, and, and, and being, getting really down to the nitty-gritty, like you said, like, all right, so how much does the move cost? What exact day is this move happening, et cetera, et cetera? So, um, I, I, I think my thought would be to add something in this letter that would address or would ask for a, a, a workshop committee or, you know, with a couple of representatives um, as soon as possible. I'm also not necessarily sure if this could wait, uh, you know, the two weeks between, uh, the, until the next select board meeting. So I, I'm just not sure if, you know, if you're looking at an August move out date at this point, there's certainly a uh, you know, certainly a need for speed here. And also I think that there, the other thing that's worth noting is especially after last night and, and the long-term building discussions and everything, this is, um, you know, this is kind of at the top of the, the agenda or, or is, is a chief concern on the select board's mind and I, and everyone's mind at the town. I think this is a way to, this would be able to, we'd be able to hash this out pretty quickly if, if we just sat down and took a day and did it.
Right, yeah, I, I'm in agreement there. I think, you know, the, the full committee, um, if the full committee wants to go to the July twenty-second meeting, which I believe uh, this will appear on the select board's agenda, we can also post that as ours, just so there's no, you know, issue with, with open meeting, um. So if a, if you know, if a quorum of us would like to show up to that select board meeting, um, and be available for discussion, then we can, I think, certainly do that, um, on that date if we wanted to post that. But to your point, uh, Mr. Thrasher, I think, you know, if, a, if, if a subquorum of both the select board and the school committee could get together in the next, in the next week, week and a half, just so it can appear on the, um, well, it would appear on the select board's agenda anyway, just because of the letter, but um, if we could meet in the next week, week and a half, um, on that, that would be, I think, helpful just to iron out some of the, the issues that have been raised. I think part of that too would be helpful, just because I'm not sure the communication that members of the select board are getting. Um, you know, if any, so I'm not sure how up to date they are on, on, you know, a lot of the logistics of this. So I think that would be, that would be helpful in form of discussion on the twenty-second, so. Um, so I'm in agreement with that and adding that to the letter, um. All right, is there anything further on, on that? Any further discussion?
No, the only thing I would say is make, if we can get things done as soon as possible, because that move will take a lot of people, a lot of work, a lot of organization. You don't wanna put it, you know, it doesn't wanna be, they shouldn't put it off to the end because it's not fair to all those people who are doing the move and getting their stuff together. A little urgency.
Right, abso- absolutely. No, I, I, I agree with that. Um, yeah, I, I think between this coming week and the select board meeting on the twenty-second, I think that would, between those discussions, I think would be sufficient to, to finally, you know, finalize this, uh, and the logistics going into it and have the select board, you know, having an understanding of this and, and us understanding, you know, the issues that they raise, so, and addressing those. So I think that would give an opportunity for that. So my hope is that between the discussions that happen between now, uh, and the twenty-second and the select board meeting on the twenty-second, that this would be finalized, um.
Mr. Chair, this is listed as an action item. Are you looking for a motion with?
You are, yeah, sure. So if, if I would entertain a motion to approve that the letter be sent to the select board with, with the amendment that was discussed regarding uh, a meeting with the board prior to the meeting on the twenty-second.
I will, I will uh move that, uh, and, and I would like, I would ask that this can, move that the communication be sent as well, uh, excuse me, with the addition of requesting a, a workshop committee in the next week and the appearance of the full um, school committee, uh, or those who wish to attend at the next select board meeting as well.
I'll second.
Okay, uh, motion made in second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, uh, we'll take a roll call vote.
I, Gloria Cabral.
I, Christopher Thrasher.
I, Jason Pacheco.
I, Evan Gendrow. Okay, thank you. Okay, that concludes our action agenda. So moving to our informational agenda, we have the superintendent's report.
Yeah, very quickly, uh, we just received our, uh, our AP scores and we will have a report for the school committee, um, at the uh, next meeting, uh. We're cautiously optimistic, uh, about some of them. Obviously, there were some that, um, we've taken action to try and improve for next year and uh, we'll present all of that to the uh, uh, committee at our next meeting, if that's uh, okay with the chair.
That sounds great.
Thanks.
Okay, um, next item, uh, Massachusetts Association of School Committees and Massachusetts Association of Schools Superintendent's Joint Conference twenty-twenty-four, early bird special attendance discussion.
Yeah, just uh, um, as, as you know, Mr. Chair, uh, there is a joint M A S S M A S E uh, meeting that takes place in November. Uh, you know, uh, the uh, school committee members have attended in the past and uh, have found it valuable, so I'll, I'll stop there.
Right, yeah, I, I will uh, add that I attended last year as a new member of the committee and it was valuable to me, uh, to hear their perspectives. There's a lot of great panels that are held over the course of, of a couple of days. And, you know, it's even, you know, I think helpful just to hear the perspectives of other committee members throughout the state and the issues that they're dealing with. Um, but also from a, a technical point of view, there's a lot of ground that's covered. Um, and a lot of different types of panels that are offered, so it's, it's, I think it's valuable. They also offer during that, um, I think they did last year at least, and I'm sure they will again. Um, there's a, uh, a session called charting the course, which new members are required to attend by, under state law, within a year of, of their election. So um, you know, I know we have two new members, so that would be a good opportunity there. They, they have other sessions as well that they hold those. I think they hold them weekly or, or a few times a month. Um, but that's, you know, they, that's included as part of that, so um, it may be good there. But I, I would, I would definitely encourage members to consider attending, just, you know, I, I think it's a, I think it's valuable. So, um, the commissioner usually speaks as well as part of the, the keynote address. Um, and it's, you know, it's nice to hear sort of where the, the department's at at the state level um, and the direction they're heading, the issues that are on their radar. So, um, it's, it's uh, it gives good context and insight into, you know, the, the happenings around the state with, with education. And if anyone would like to attend, um, they, registration is on their website and, you know, I'm sure, you know, Lori could, could help coordinate also, but, um, the registration's also on the, on the site. There's more information there. They lay out the program, so if you're, if you're interested or want more details, that's uh, it's available there. Okay, routine matters, correspondences and notices. I have none. Uh, topics a chair could not reasonably anticipate forty hours in advance of the meeting, I have none there. Also, before we adjourn, I did want to read in, um, I was remiss at the beginning of the meeting not to include this, but I wanted to read it in now. Um, on March twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three, Governor Maura Healey signed into law chapter two of the Acts of twenty-twenty-three, which includes a two-year extension of the option for public bodies to hold a remote meetings effective immediately. The legislation simply extends the current option for remote meetings through March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five and does not otherwise affect the ability of the public bodies to conduct their meetings remotely through video and our audio conferencing under chapter twenty of the Acts of twenty-twenty-one. So that was on our agenda. I just wanted to read it in before we adjourn, so. If there's no further items, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made in seconded, we'll take a roll call vote.
I, Gloria Cabral.
I, Christopher Thrasher.
I, Jason Pacheco.
I, Evan Gendrow. All right, thank you, everyone.